Okay, welcome, everybody. It's 6 o'clock, 6:00 PM. We call the Baby Town Meeting to order. We've got a number of things to cover, and we'll be able to move pretty rapidly. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome our in-person and virtual attendees. And this evening, as we have done, how are you, Marie? As we've done in the past, we, the purpose of this meeting is to deal principally with the Finance Committee's review of the operating and capital budget and warrant articles with financial implications as to appropriation, borrowing, and creation of debt and property disposal as respects the town of Stockbridge. And these items that we deal with, we've dealt with the majority of them, will be presented next week at the annual meeting, May 15th, Monday, at 6:30 PM. I'd like to particularly thank Michael Canales, our town administrator and our department heads for their efforts in the development of these documents. That is, the articles, the budgets, the, all of the materials that will be circulated. And also, thanks to our Select Board for their import and support of the process, and to everybody here on the Finance Committee for your continuous interest, input, and participation in dedicated service, okay? Really appreciate it, because we couldn't do it without this great, this is a great group, a great cohesive group. And also, special thanks to moderator Gary Johnson, who's appointed an exceptionally qualified committee. Everybody here has expertise either in corporate or individual finance, and we have several people that have actually served government in specific roles, be it the Select Board or town administrator. Here, this evening, we have Ed Lane, Jim Ballfans, Georgia Mazdin, Steve Schatz, Diane Rose, and myself, Jay Baikovsky. And unfortunately, Pam Boudreau could not be here today. She has a mandatory corporate meeting with the bank, Lee Bank. And Bill Vogt could not be here. He had a, his brother-in-law had a critical health problem in South Carolina, and they had to go there. Things are not good. So, we regret that, but we certainly have a majority to do what we have to do this evening. We have circulated the minutes of April 20th to everybody on the committee. Are there any comments relative to those minutes?
I move the approval.
Second, Ed? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And you abstain, you were not at the meeting. So, so this would be two? Yes? Because what you have to do, Ed, is you go, we go along, so we get, we get the information right. Now, before we get into the actual articles, the budgets, and articles and warrants, there are two items that we need to bring up in advance that this committee has not had a chance to react to. Under Article IV, under the operating budget, we did not include, under the debt section, $40,000 for the principal and $23,600 for the interest that was borrowed for the Park Street pump station, okay? That, you will recall, was approved last year in May at the annual meeting. So therefore, we, what this does is it changes the operating budget to $11,686,559. That includes education, we'll talk about that, or $137,246 increase over fiscal year '23. In other words, the increase is $60,000 more. So, we need a motion to approve this. This is something we've, we're committed to. It's been approved by the town, it's been approved all along. So, are there, any questions relative to this?
I move the approval.
Okay.
I will second.
Okay, so that's Jim is the first, Steve is the second, and that is the Park Street principal and interest. Okay. The second one. Under Article 12, we, basically, the Finance Committee has gone through all of the articles, and it has approved all of them with the exception of these two items. So, we've basically, we've basically approved this one now, the first one. And the second one, Article 12, there's a new number eight, which is the appropriation of $25,000, which is proposed, has been proposed and voted upon at the most recent Select Board meeting of April 27th for the design, engineering permitting, and improvements to the Stockbridge Bowl boat ramp, okay? Now, basically, this has been approved by the Select Board. We have not had the opportunity to review the alternatives. We, we, we don't have the time to do it at this point, because it's going to come before the town. So therefore, my, my first thought here, are there any comments relative to this?
Well, let's put the motion, let's put the motions on the floor, and then we can have the comments.
I would make a motion to approve.
I will second that.
Okay. One sec. Jim?
Well, I want to speak against the approval of this, and for a very simple reason, as was explained at the Select Board meeting. The town has been trying to get the state of Massachusetts to actually act on their promise to actually do the full renovation of the boat launch. It is state-owned property. It's not owned by the town of Stockbridge. Using free cash from the town of Stockbridge taxpayers, you know, the added free cash is not free. It's Stockbridge taxpayers' money. I did a little research, very briefly, and when you look at, the town cannot, it was originally approached from the standpoint of using ARPA funds. And we were asked at the Sportsman's Club to poll the board members, because we were told by the proposer of that that if the Stockbridge Sportsman's Club did not approve it, that it would not go forward. So, the Board of Directors was polled, and all but one board member voted in favor of using ARPA funds. The morning of that meeting, we found out that ARPA funds cannot be used because ARPA funds are awarded to the town of Stockbridge, and the bowl is owned by the state of Massachusetts. So, the bottom line is, the Sportsman's Club withdrew the approval of that using free cash, for the simple reason that free cash is, as I said, is not free. It's Stockbridge taxpayer funds. $25,000 is not a lot of money, but it is a lot of money when you start adding up 25 here, 40 here, 75 here, and the next thing you know, we've got real money that we're dealing with. I looked just briefly online, and I see where the state of Massachusetts received, I'll say somewhere between 3.4 billion, upwards to 5.3 billion in ARPA funds. Now, the state can use ARPA funds for that project. So, our statement was, we would rather vote this down and ask the selectmen to vehemently, as much as they can, go to the state and press them to use ARPA funds to not just do the $25,000, but let's pay for the whole project. They have the funds, but let's pursue that from a town to get that done. And that's why I'm going to vote no on the approval of this. I'm asking the rest of us to vote no. And the reason is, if we vote no on this, it takes a two-thirds majority vote at the town meeting. If we don't, if we approve it, it only takes a simple majority vote plus one. And I think this is important enough that I think the town of Stockbridge voters should be allowed to vote, and there should be a vote that requires a two-thirds majority. That's all I'll say about. Let me finish with one last thing. There isn't anybody I've talked with who does not want to see that bowl improved. We've been dealing with this for a lot of years. And there isn't anybody that does not want to see this done. But using free cash for a state project, we just think is wrong. And I personally think it's wrong, and I would hope that we have enough people to vote this down, that the town gets to vote yea or nay, but it takes a two-thirds vote. That's, that's where I'm at.
Any other comments relative to this from the committee?
I would have one question, and that is, is there any sense of the getting those funds from the state? Is there a sense, or is it just a?
We don't know.
Kind of a thing?
It's, it's a protracted process. We don't know how long it would take. And I think the basic issue here, as I see this, from my perspective, is yes, we should have had this in a more timely way. Yes, we should have been able to analyze the options more clearly. But ultimately, ultimately, this is something that's used by the public in Stockbridge. And really, you know, we ultimately delay and hurt them and their ability to use the boat ramp if we don't approve this at this point. Jim?
Well, I would respond by saying, when you said this could be delayed, it's my understanding that ARPA funds, at least from the town of Stockbridge, and I believe it may be the same with the state of Massachusetts, the ARPA funds must be dedicated, I believe, by December 31st of this year, and must be spent by, I believe it's December 2024. So, I don't think we're looking at a lengthy process to get the state moving on this. I think it's just a matter of, let's ask our town officials to pursue it.
Fine.
That's my position.
We have a motion, we have a second. Are there any further comments? They're being done, all in, Michael?
Ed?
The only thing I'm not sure of is that it's not a two-thirds majority. Section 7.1 means that it has to be a secret ballot. It's just a still majority for free cash.
Well, then, then I would ask this. I think, given the, yeah, thank you, thank you. Given the transponders, every vote is a secret vote anyway.
Yes, and this would, if the Finance Committee doesn't approve it, this would place a hole on that article at town meeting, because it would have to be considered separate.
Right, with, with the explanation that the Finance Committee voted against it.
Against it, if the Finance Committee so.
Okay, did you have any other? Okay.
I just want to say this is contingent on the state doing 25 and rematching the 25. I mean, it's not like we're going to pay $25,000 towards it without the state putting $25,000 up.
They should put all of the money using the ARPA funds.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? One, two, three? Okay, opposed? One. We have three?
Aye.
That's a no vote.
Okay, moving on, if I might. The Finance Committee report of fiscal year 2022. Very briefly, the financial, the fiscal results for fiscal year 2022 were satisfactory per our accounting firm. All departments continued to exercise commendable fiscal discipline and compliance. The tax rate for 2022 was 9.38, a decrease of 40 cents from 2021. Certified free cash in that year was $2.52373 million at the annual town meeting in an effort to minimize increase to the tax levy. Free cash, the balance that I mentioned, some of those monies were voted for designation to a number of projects. $250,000 for the replacement of the fire engine. That supplements an additional $750,000. $385,206 for sewer system expansion. $340,000 for replacement of two highway trucks, and $50,000 to conduct the Campusa Bog hydrological study. Other projects designated for free cash include the Highway Department backhoe replacement, Bobcat replacement of tool carrier restoration, and repair of the Glendale and Interlakeen Fire Stations. The total balance of certified unspent free cash in 2022 was $1.104,367 million. And the total bond indebtedness in that year was $10,449,562. And at the annual meeting, there were several large expenditures. $3.5 million for the school operating budget. $90,000 for the capital budget Berkshire Regional School District. $1.950 million for the second Avrick Road Bridge. The fire engine that I mentioned, $750,000. The total budget for that thing is going to be a million dollars. They're extremely expensive, and it takes almost a year to get them, I might add. Park Street Pump Station, which we voted for, $200,000. The salt shed in the transfer station, $448,000. That needs to be replaced. And Tuckaman's Bridge, that's the bridge down by the Gulf Force Stockbridge Country Club. It goes over that little brook, it's deteriorating.
Goes over the Hoosier Tonic.
Well, the, the brook that goes in feeds into the Hoosier Tonic. Right. So, at any rate, the Finance Committee looks forward to, again, working in that year with the Select Board and town administrator, and also all of the department heads, and that represents the report for 2022, which was presented to this Finance Committee, the audited draft financial statements by our accountants, okay? Now, moving on to our articles, which will come up. These articles, the operating budget was voted for by the Finance Committee, 7-0, all in favor. And Michael, do you want to put that document up, and we can run through some of the highlights of it? Okay, here we go.
Where do you need the article?
Let's, let's bring it up to the general government section.
Article four.
That's Article four.
Which is always at the end.
At the end, right.
Glad I didn't have to do this.
Wouldn't have been any different.
You could call Elizabeth.
That one looks great. Leave it right there. We approve that.
Do you want me to?
It's only loaded to page.
Want me to just go through it?
No, let me just give me one second. I had it voted from before, and for some reason it's.
Are you going to do, you're going to make the Article four presentation at the town?
I'll go to it.
You have to.
On that?
Do the Article four presentation at the town meeting.
I don't know.
Because it includes their salaries. That's why the Select Board can't do it.
Yeah, no, I'll, we'll do it, I'll do it. That's fine. All right, you want me to move along?
One second. Sometimes technology just doesn't.
This is a technology issue. This is not the Finance Committee.
For whatever reason, by loading it early, it actually didn't let that. All right, there we are. We have one, just the first page.
Okay, general government, that's the first one. Okay, now, just by way of a brief overview, the proposed operating budget, Article four, and that includes education, an increase of $137,246, or 1.1% over fiscal year '23. And that includes, in that, in that budget, the debt for the Park Street Pump Station, which we just talked about. Also, as an overview, non-union employees receive the 2.5% cost of living and a 2% cost of living increase for union employees. Now, general government. General government, you will note, reductions in the selectmen's expenses, those are specifically litigation expenses. Also, town facilities expenses. We've had a staff reduction in that function. Reduction in the Glendale solar maintenance line, and that created an overall reduction of $15,259 in general government expenses. Moving on to public safety. Public safety, you will note increases in police department salaries per union, also police department expenses, and also fire department salaries and fire department expenses. The fi, the police expenses and the fire department expenses relate to equipment, maintenance, and fuel, okay? Which is unfortunately going up again. And basically, the salaries under the police department are union-related, the increase. And the fire department, we have approved an additional decision for the fire department to supplement the activities of the fire chief. This committee has approved that at a previous meeting. Other public safety changes were building inspector salaries. For your information, Ned Baldwin has retired March 1st. He has been replaced by a gentleman, Matt Keller, who worked for several communities, and we have also had to support that function with secretarial and office staff. So, that represented an increase. And between the salaries, expenses, with, you would note an increase there of $149,000, $150,000 under public safety. Education is dealt with under Articles five, six, and seven. But lumping them here, because this operating budget includes education, the operating budget for the Berkshire Hills Regional School District increased $153,607. All you have to do is look at the papers with respect to recruiting teachers and teachers aides. Very, very difficult, okay? The capital budget assessment decreased $11,997. The, some of the building loans have been paid off. So, that assessment to Stockbridge is reduced. And this is a new one. Berkshire Hills Regional District Vocational Tuition to the Toconic High School for several students that go there for vocational training. We do not have, it's two, that's correct. We do not have that facility at this point in the Berkshire Hills Regional School District. All told, the Articles five, six, and seven, which are included under Article four, increased $221,000 to a total of $3.91 million for our education. Public works, okay? Public works basically saw salary increases and expenses, equipment, maintenance, and expenses, an increase of $31,622. And that includes highway, sewer, and water departments, okay? Human services, you would note a modest increase of $27,322 for the farmers market to staff that, forest and agriculture, and also council on the aging salaries, which was included in that category. Culture and recreation, we do support, as a town, the Stockbridge Library, $16,000 increases. There is staffing and ongoing expenses with that facility. And obviously, $19,000 for the tourism. This is, you could see advertisements on TV for NOMCAK. You could see them for a number of facilities. They're on, on, on the national broadcast. So, they've done a pretty great job in talking up Stockbridge. An increase of $37,000 for, for those, for those items. And also, you know, there are, there is support for the Memorial Day Committee and Parks and Recreation and other things that we do. Now, debt service. Debt service has a reduction to a reduced amount of $1,119,000 over fiscal year '23 because stabilization monies were allocated for principal and interest debt service. That's for the town offices, as well as the water treatment plant. And that amounts to $385,454, about $450,000. And that's the $347,000, much of that reduction that you see. And that allows us to pay off debt. Yes, in the future, we have to plan for a number of different things. You know, you know the discussions going on with the schools and the, and the fire department, so forth. But this gives us a considerable amount of flexibility. And also, in the operating budget, the Berkshire County Retirement increased $16,727. That's, that's a minute amount of money. And Berkshire Healthcare, everybody's healthcare has gone up. So, also, the operating budget notes $13,000 increase in town insurance. Again, the increase over fiscal year 2023 is $137,246, or a total of $11,686,559, including those three educational columns that we talked about. Are there any questions from in-person or virtual on the budget? This has been approved by the Select Board and unanimously by the Finance Committee. Okay, and this will go, obviously, to the town at next week's town meeting. Article number five, I mentioned to you that Article, Article five dealt with the appropriation for the operating budget for the Berkshire Hills Regional School District. Article six is the reduction, the capital expense request, reduction for the capital budget Berkshire Hills. And Article seven is the Toconic High School vocational tuition for two students. So, that, that deals with that. At this point, I would like to call on Steve Schatz to deal with a number of articles. Stephen?
Article eight. Jay referred to the fact that we are positioning ourselves to bring our bond indebtedness down in anticipation of incurring additional bond indebtedness with respect to some rather large projects, potentially, you know, a new high school. And Article eight is part of that strategy, and it's one that we started last year. So, we have a special stabilization fund that we're going to use to pay off the balance of the bond indebtedness on the. on the town office project and also the water treatment plant project. That amounts to $1,198,826. Now, hearing no questions, I will move on to the next financial article.
The other thing also, Steve, you might mention the bond rating for the towns of Stockbridge, which gives us really a preferential borrowing.
We'll get to that.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Next week.
Forgive me.
Go ahead.
Next week, we'll get to that.
Go ahead. Keep going.
Okay? Not now.
Double A plus.
I know what you want.
Go ahead.
Article Twelve. Just by way of preference, these are, there's an itemization here of various expenses to be paid for out of certified free cash. The certified free cash is, prior to the expenses that are listed here, is approximately $2,671,000. The net result of the funding of these items, with the exception of the $25,000, which now has to be pulled out of this article and put into a separate article for consideration on the town meeting floor. Am I correct?
It'll be automatically held.
It'll be held. Thank you. Okay. The net result, in any event, after the expenditure of these items will be a certified free cash of approximately $1,140,000. One million, excuse me, $1,093. One mi, no, it'll be 1.093 plus 25. I'm not good at the quick math. So you can see these articles, from this article, rather, that we're funding a number of projects, the largest of which is the funding of road reconstruction and repaving. There's a fair amount of that that has to be done as a result of, in part, the reconstruction of bridges and the detours and the effect on certain roads as a result of those detours. The, I will mention one item in here, okay? And this is item Number Five, which I know will get some attention at the town meeting. And if, I would like to beg the indulgence of everyone here so that I don't have to go through that tonight. I'll stand up in the microphone and be questioned by I-know-who. Okay? Is that all right with you?
I'm sorry, I wasn't listening.
Oh.
I wasn't able to hear, actually.
Do you have your hearing aids on tonight?
I do, but they're...
They're not working so well.
They're not so terrific.
Okay. What I was saying, Danny, was that Item Five under Article Twelve is the $25,000 funding for the rest of the river committee, okay? And I'm just asking everyone here if we can put off the discussion, which I know will come at the annual town meeting, about that issue.
To, you mean, put off the discussion this evening?
Yeah. Until then.
Correct.
Thank you. So unless there are specific questions about the items to be funded under this article, I'd like to move on.
Steve?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Permission to speak? It has come to my attention that the most challenging issue for the safety of the town, and I believe that, Steve, I think you mentioned this to me in a conversation a few years ago, is the issue of dam safety related to impoundments of PCBs along the river, probably beginning at Woods Pond Dam and then down to Willow, the Mead Corporation Dam, and then, oh no, there's a Columbia, I know.
Eagle and Columbia.
Eagle and Columbia. And then in South Lee and so on. And I wonder if has, have, I don't know if this is appropriate place to discuss this, but it's come to my attention, and I'm not sure if you were referring to this or not in our conversation of several years ago, that part of the dam safety issue is the condition of the dams which Pittsfield owns above Woods Pond Dam, some of which are in the high-hazard category. And the concern being that if San Losh or Farinum or, you know, Cleveland, one of those big Pittsfield dams was to fail, that a substantial flood of water would come down into the area containing the PCBs, wash them over the Woods Pond Dam and bring them right down to Stockbridge. Is, was that what you were referring to?
No.
In that conversation?
No, it was not.
It was not?
It was not.
So you were referring to the dams between...
What I was referring to at the time
Yes.
was the danger of having impounded sediments behind the Woods Pond Dam that exists right now in Woods Pond and which exist in the vernal pools and the backwater areas, and of having that water with PCB-contaminated sediments and it flow across the top of Woods Pond Dam, down into Lee, through the already breached, you know, Eagle has already been breached.
Right.
That dam. Hitting Columbia, the Columbia Dam, which is, as part of this whole program, is going to be demolished. Eagle and Columbia are going to be demolished. Okay?
Okay.
The Willow Dam is an operating hydroelectric dam under the jurisdiction of the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission and is subject to inspection.
Yeah.
Frequent inspection. The impounded sediments behind that dam are also going to be removed. Then you get to Glendale. And we also have a hydroelectric dam just south of On Route 183.
Yes.
Just south of the Norman Rockwell. There are impounded sediments there which will also be removed. And then you get down to Rising. And the same thing is going to happen when that pond is also dredged and sediments are taken. About 9,000 cubic yards of contaminated sediment's going to be taken out of there. And the sediments behind the Rising Pond Dam will also be removed. Now, I don't know about Pittsfield. I can't tell you. Other than to say that there are certain reaches, what are called reaches or sections of the river in Pittsfield, the southern part of Pittsfield, which are also going to be remediated. Most of the high concentration, highly toxic concentrations of PCBs were removed from Pittsfield except for the area immediately north of, it's more or less north with the way that river goes, immediately north of Lennox. And that area is going to be, both the banks as well as the, there are vernal pools in there, there are backwaters. That's also going to be cleaned up as well and brought down to, you know, a fairly low level of, in fact, below toxic levels completely.
Who is...
So I can't tell you. I can't tell you about the dams in Pittsfield. I don't know, Danny. And if you'd like an answer, I mean, if you'd like facts and figures about that, I think there are people who are capable of doing that. And they're in Pittsfield. And I think Jim McGrath is probably the person. Do you know Jim?
I do, do not.
All right. Well, Jim McGrath is a longtime public employee in Pittsfield. And he is in charge of these issues. And he'd be a good person to talk to.
I was, I did have a conversation with Michael.
Michael who?
Canellas.
Oh.
A day or two ago on the topic of dam safety. And because we do have dam safety issues here in Stockbridge, Michael mentioned the, you know, the eventuality of a possible dam failure at the Stockbridge Bowl. Or did you mention, Eric, Mike?
Well, no, and I wouldn't say eventual. No. What I said is that we have one high-hazard dam. So the high-hazard dams are just a designation. That means if the dam fails, there's a high probability of loss of human life or property. It doesn't mean that the dams themselves are in good, bad condition. That's the rating that comes out of them and you might have saw in the Eagle where they identified. So some people give the designation of a high, high-safety dam and think that there's something wrong with it. It just means that that's the type of dam it is. And therefore, everybody is required, if you have a high-hazard dam, to do a dam review every two years, which we have done at Stockbridge Bowl. And then you have to update every so many years your emergency action plans around those dams so that if there was, we have a full understanding of what would happen.
This, it would seem, has to go into the process of evaluation, you know, however we evaluate these. Unfortunately, the Finance Committee is not involved in this. We've got nothing relative to expenditure for this situation. So it's something, it's an administrative matter, Danny, that needs to be evaluated. And then ultimately, a cost built into what the process is. You know, what's the issue? Is there a potential failure? What's the remedy? How much is it going to cost? We've had no knowledge of this at all, okay? At this point.
Well, may I respond? There are a number of issues which the town is funding or has funded. Dam, not necessarily dam repairs, but a bridge.
Yes.
We're investing a lot of money in bridges. And one of the, I am sure one of the questions that the engineers have dealt with is, you know, should the Curtisville, you know, should the Stockbridge Bowl dam fail, how does that affect Curtisville Bridge? Is it going to be engineered with that in mind? And so I think, I thank you for the opportunity to address the committee on these concerns.
And I think it's an issue that needs to be explored, you know? I wish we could give you a more definitive response.
I think I've had quite a...
No, it's fine.
Quite a good response.
Stephen, go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. So moving on to Article Thirteen. Thirteen and fourteen are, I would sort of group them together. These are water and sewer projects that are paid for out of, in the case of sewers, sewer available surplus. And in the case of Article Fourteen, it's out of Water Operations Reserve Fund, which is similar. These are funds which have been set aside by the Sewer and Water Commission. They are, they're funds that come from ratepayers, all of us, many of us. And they, although we have to appropriate them, they actually don't, these are not raising appropriate...
They don't affect the tax rate.
They do not affect...
They're still raising them though.
They're raising appropriate, but they don't affect the tax rate. So, and they're, you know, I have no specific comment on any of, any one of these. If anyone has specific questions, I'm sure we can try and get an answer. So those are Articles Thirteen and Fourteen. Jay, I think that's it for me.
Thank you. Any questions? Just as an aside, at the town meeting, at the town meeting, the moderator will call on, will refer to Article Fourteen. And then he'll ask if there are any questions relative to any of the elements of that article. And if there are already, there would be, put a hold on that particular portion for subsequent discussion at the meeting. Is that correct, Michael?
So what will happen is the article caught with all of the subcategories. There'll be a motion, a second discussion, and a vote. If somebody from the audience wishes to hold one, to have a separate vote on just that single piece of it, then all somebody will have to do is ask for a hold, say, on Number Three. Number Three would be held. We'd vote on the remainder. And then we would have a separate vote on the held item.
That's what we could look forward to with the town meeting. Okay? At this point, Georgia will deal with the community preservation request.
So Article Fifteen is the Community Preservation Committee's request for budget, and which they have all approved. And the Finance Board has approved all of these articles. Number One is $50,000 for Riverbrook to replace a fire escape. Number Two is $15,000 for the walkway lighting at Heaton Court. Number Three is $125,000 for Pine Woods for reconstruction of their driveway. Four is $20,000 for Heaton Court Siding Board Replacement. Five, $42,000 for the restoration of the Sergeant Tomb Slabs. Six is $185,617 for the Waldorf School for preservation of the Old Town Hall. Seven, appropriate $20,000 for Laurel Hill for capital improvements to Mary Lynn Trail. Eight, $11,500 for work at Bullard Woods to preserve open space by removal of invasive species and required permitting. Nine, $300,000 to be used by the Stockbridge Land Trust for the acquisition of the Fenn Farm property. Ten, $11,917 for Gould Meadows to preserve open space by removal of invasive species, improve recreation walkways, trees, and garden work. Eleven, $5,200 to conserve the Footbird Sanctuary property. Twelve, $3,875 for the 19th-century dagewegging-type photos by Anson Stark of West Stockbridge. And he also lived in Stockbridge. So just wanted to put that in there. Thirteen, $10,000 for the administrative budget for the community preservation. And lastly, reserve, the Historic Resource Reserve, the Community Housing Reserve, and the Open Space Reserve from Community Preservation anticipated FY '24 annual revenues, the minimum amounts required by Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section Six, which is expected to be $44,310 per category.
Okay. Any questions or comments? These have all been approved by both the, one sec, by both the Finance Committee and the Select Board. Rich, you want to introduce Rich Bradway?
Sure. My name is Rich Bradway. And I'm the president of the Stockbridge Land Trust. And I just wanted to make a statement that hopefully make things very clear in terms of how things are going with the work we're doing. So here's our statement. The Stockbridge Land Trust would like to withdraw its request for community preservation funds that were intended to support in the acquisition and conservation of Fenn Farm, a 351-acre property in southwestern Stockbridge. Recently, the circumstances around how the land would be purchased and by whom have changed. Presently, the Stockbridge Muncie community plans to acquire the land. And they have submitted an application for a municipal vulnerabilities program or MVP Action Grant from the Commonwealth of... from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to help underwrite the purchase and conservation of this property. With this alternate funding in place, the community preservation funds are no longer required for this purpose. Regarding the ongoing stewardship of this land, the Stockbridge Land Trust and the Berkshire Natural Resources Council have assisted the community in applying for this grant, and they will continue to collaborate with the Stockbridge Monsey Community on the part of property's conservation in the future. The Stockbridge Land Trust would like to thank the Community Preservation Committee and the Finance Committee and the Town of Stockbridge for their support of our efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Any questions? Rich, thank you for all of your efforts on behalf of your organization. Thank you. Okay. That deals with all of the financially-based articles. The only last comment I would make is on the citizen's petition. Any comments that come up on that will come up next week at the annual town meeting. That this is not an appropriate forum for that petition. So basically, those are the articles that will come before the town. And are there any questions or comments on what has been presented thus far? There being none, I would again thank the town administrator and the department heads, the Select Board, and this committee for all of your efforts, and we look forward to working closely with the Select Board and town administrator on the FY '24 financial projects that impact our town. And as a reminder, the town meeting next Monday, the 15th, in the gym, 6:30 PM. Are there any other comments? Otherwise, I would propose...
I move adjourned.
Second. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. See you next week.